Hi Jim.
Hi Jim.
Yeah.
Hi Dot.
Good to see you.
Hi Jim.
Don't get quiet, we got three or four more.
Jim.
Yeah, Dot.
Good to see you.
Hi Jim.
Don't get quiet, we got three or four more.
Jim.
Yeah, Dot.
Good to see you.
Hi Jim.
Don't get quiet, we got three or four more.
Jim.
Yeah, Dot.
Hi Jim.
Don't get quiet, we got three or four more.
Yeah, Dot.
Oh really?
Yeah, so where are you at?
Well, I've been thinking about going, but I just, I didn't know if anybody was showing up or not.
Um, this, tomorrow night is probably the least popular person playing.
You could safely say we'd be done with this.
Yeah.
And we're monotone.
I'll bet you can't make it count. I gotta talk to Mark too.
Next month, next week.
Wednesday, seven o'clock.
Hey Mark.
What's up?
Hi. Need to catch you for a minute when we're done tonight, please.
So we just, we just give out the rest to the people.
I think the mayor was saying.
Others are, they're seventy, eighty.
Okay.
I'm mostly interested, they're just sitting around watching.
Who?
She comes under his house. She doesn't come, she's like, she was in an accident, had a heavy injury, and she's, she feels her rhythm, he says.
Oh, uh, I don't know. Will she come? Okay, let me see.
Okay.
Thanks.
Gotcha. How's Mr. Nisley?
Doing fine Donna, how are you doing?
Good. Good, good, good. Are these people here because of pickleball?
Of the what?
These people must be here because of pickleball.
Oh, I bet you that's what it is. What's on the courses, isn't it?
No, I think he was standing around.
Jim? Oh, same old guy.
Trent, can you hear me?
Well, good evening everyone, and welcome to the North Platte City Council meeting on November sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one, beginning at five thirty PM. We are here in the city council chambers. I'm calling the meeting to order. First on tonight, we have the invocation by Minister George Cheek from the Maranatha Bible Camp.
Almighty God, we do acknowledge your presence on the second Tuesday of November, on the year of our Lord, two thousand twenty-one. We come to you on behalf of our mayor, our city council members. Help them lay aside distractions, the events of the day. Give clarity to them, and the details at hand. We too pray for the citizens of this municipality, their needs, their blessings. In closing, I recognize there could be several religions represented this evening, but I choose to pray in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ, amen.
Praise allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Cheek. Roll call, please.
Nisley?
Here.
Crown?
Here.
Bowles?
Here.
Lucas?
Gary?
Carmen?
Here.
Ricker?
Here.
Here.
Thank you. Open Meetings Act, a current copy of the Open Meetings Act of Nebraska is posted on the wall at the back of the council chambers. Meeting procedure, the public may address specific agenda items at the pleasure of the mayor. If recognized by the mayor, please identify yourself by stating your name and address. Please address the council through the mayor and limit your remarks to, well, we're gonna change that a little bit tonight, so we'll talk about that later. We respect our city employees and request that any complaints or criticisms of employees not be aired in a public meeting. Concerns about employees should be brought to the attention of the city administrator or the mayor. Individuals in violation will be declared out of order. Awards and accolades, we have two things in this category tonight. And the first one is going to be a proclamation, so pardon me while I stand up and assume my proclamation voice here, so. You're all laughing. Officer, the mayor, proclamation. Whereas for the past several years, the National Coalition for the Homeless and National Student Campaign Against Hunger and Homelessness have sponsored National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week. And whereas, the purpose of the proclamation is to educate the public about the many reasons people are hungry and homeless, and the statewide efforts in Nebraska to finish the job of ending homelessness, and whereas there are many statewide organizations committed to sheltering, providing supportive services, as well as meals and food supplies to the homeless, and the state of Nebraska, the Nebraska Commission on Housing and Homelessness, and the Nebraska Continuum of Care recognize that hunger and homelessness continues to be a serious problem for many individuals and families in Nebraska. And whereas, the intent of National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week is consistent with the activities of statewide food banks, pantries, and homeless shelters. Now therefore, I, Brandon A. Kelleher, Mayor of North Platte, Nebraska, do hereby proclaim the week of November thirteenth through the twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one, as National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week in North Platte, Nebraska, and I do hereby encourage all citizens to recognize that there are people who do not have housing and food, and need support of citizens and public slash private nonprofit service entities. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused this seal to be affixed. Thank you, everyone. Judy, would you like to take the proclamation, please? Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. Thank you. Okay, invite any one of you to try to get through that many wellnesses and homelessnesses without making a mistake. Next, we have, as soon as I clear my throat here, awards to the wastewater treatment facility. And the first one, we have is... Who am I gonna hand this to, Lane? Oh, there he is, okay, sorry. Doug, lost you for a second there, come on up, please. We have the Scott Wilber Award presented to the wastewater treatment plants across the state of Nebraska. They are judged based on the plant's general appearance, upkeep, and the knowledge of the staff that operates it. In the past fifteen years, the North Platte Wastewater Treatment Plant has been awarded the Scott Wilber Award fifteen times, two of which have been the best in class. That's pretty amazing, oh, you brought the whole crowd here, okay, that's good. So that's the first one, is it all right if I do them both at the same time? Okay, there's the first one, thank you. Second one is the Safety Award. The Safety Award is presented by the Nebraska Water Environment Association. It is based on the employee's safety record, accident prevention, and the employee's participation in safety. The wastewater treatment plant has been presented with this Safety Award eight times, two of which were, wear the gold Safety Award in two thousand five and two thousand eleven. Thank you very much. Okay, I wanna read the names of the gentlemen that make all this happen. We have Doug Meyer, Eric, I'm gonna ruin this last name, Fortier? Berder, okay, there we go. Tom Carson, Tyson Geisler, Orin Seidel, Sam Trent, and Trevor Seawald. Thank you very much for all your hard work, guys, it's a great honor, that many years in a row, that's amazing, so thank you. Okay, now we have the consent agenda, moving on to the business, not as much fun now. Approve the minutes of November two, two thousand twenty-one. Item number two, approve the reappointment of Tia McGuire to the North Platte Tree Board. Item number three, approve the appointment of George Hawes to the North Platte Tree Board. Item number four, authorize the mayor to sign the agreement to apply for the Nebraska Department of Transportation Highway Safety Office grant-funded overtime reimbursement to participate in the Drive Sober or Get Pulled Over High Visibility Enforcement Event. Number five, authorize the mayor to execute the purchase agreement for a two thousand twenty-two Digger Derrick for the Electric Department with Altech Industries. Item number six, authorize the mayor to execute the purchase agreement for a new bucket truck for the Electric Department with Altech Industries. Item number seven, authorize the mayor to execute the purchase agreement for a two thousand twenty-two pickup for the Electric Department with Bill Summers Ford.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second. Motion, Ricker, second, Nisley. Any discussion? Seeing none, calling the question on the consent agenda. Thank you, the consent agenda is approved.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question on, on the, on the Altech Industries, is that a Nebraska company?
I'm not sure. I'm getting, Scott, would you answer that question for us real quick?
They're out of St. Joe, Missouri.
St. Joe, Missouri, okay.
It's one of their, they also have one over in Pennsylvania.
Okay.
I mean, bucket trucks come from, around Kansas City, St. Joe, and then your Digger Derrick will come from the East Coast, so.
Not a problem. Just was gonna thank you for buying from Nebraska, but I guess I can't.
I don't have any options here.
I'm sure not, thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Item number eight. Approve bid with Western Engineering Company, Inc. of Harlan, Iowa, in the amount of three million, two hundred thirty-six thousand, six hundred eighty-eight dollars and eighty-five cents for a two thousand twenty-one overlay project, and authorize mayor to sign contract. We would need a motion to proceed.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the bid and authorize a mayor to sign contract for a two thousand twenty-one overlay project as presented in council materials. Second.
Motion, Ricker, second, Nisley. Do we have any discussion on item number eight? Seeing none, calling the question on item number eight. Item number eight is passed. Item number nine, adopt resolution for signing of the year-end certi-, excuse me, certification of city street superintendent for two thousand twenty-one, and authorize the mayor to sign the year-end certification of city street superintendent for two thousand twenty-one.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution for signing of the year-end certification of city street superintendent for two thousand twenty-one, and authorize the mayor to sign the year-end certification of city street superintendent for two thousand twenty-one.
Motion, Ricker, second, Carmen. Any discussion on item number nine? Seeing none, calling the question on item number nine. Item number nine passes. Number ten, third reading and action on ordinance number four zero seven seven to rezone certain land from an R-two dwelling district to an R-three dwelling district on property located at four zero four and four zero six West F Street. Mr. Kibbin, would you read the ordinance, please?
An ordinance of the city of North Platte, Lincoln County, Nebraska, rezoning certain lands described as Lot One, Block Twenty, Residence Park subdivision, North Platte, Lincoln County, Nebraska, from an R-two dwelling district to an R-three dwelling district, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinance in conflict herewith, providing for the effective date and publication thereof.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number forty seventy-seven to rezone certain land from an R-two dwelling district to an R-three dwelling district as shown on the attached map on final reading. Second.
Motion, Ricker, second, Bowles. Any discussion on item number ten? Seeing none, calling the question on item number ten. Item number ten is passed. Okay. Moving on to item number eleven, but first, we have a public hearing prior to that. Those of you that were here last week or might have watched, or, excuse me, not last week, but the last council meeting, know that we, we had some discussion about the length in which I typically let people talk at the microphone, and trying to resolve some perceived inequities in that. And so, in keeping with my data-driven thought process, what I'm going to do here is, is for the next few meetings, two or three or four, I'm gonna let people talk. I'm going to time them, but, Mr. Williams, you don't have to worry, I'm not gonna display it up here, so you won't have to worry about that, okay? And I'm gonna just jot down the times. And my, my parameters are gonna be, as lo-, as long as you're making new points, I'll let you continue to talk. But when people start to repeat themselves, or people get unruly, or people begin to wander from topic, I'm gonna ask them to summarize their thoughts, and if they do so within the minute, then I won't have to cut anybody off. So we're gonna try that for a while, see how it goes. If it blows up in my face, I reserve the right to change my mind. But I think right now, that's what we're gonna try. So when you see me interacting with the iPad and jotting stuff down, that's what's going on. Okay. That being said, we are declaring a public hearing open to consider an ordinance number four zero seven eight realigning council wards as required by Nebraska statute three two dash five three three, section two. Public hearing is now open. If anyone would like to address the council on this issue? Oops, sorry, gotta read the ordinance. Matt, would you read the ordinance for me? Thank you.
An ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of North Platte, Lincoln County, Nebraska, amending existing ward boundaries in the city of North Platte, Nebraska, reflecting population changes as reported in official, in the official two thousand twenty U.S. census, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinance in conflict herewith, providing for the effective date and publication in pamphlet form.
Thank you, and thank you for reminding me. Okay, public hearing is open. Anyone would like to address the council regarding the council realigning of wards? We'd be happy to hear your comments or field your questions. I'll wait ten more seconds, just to show that we did this. Okay, I think that's been about ten seconds.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we close the public hearing. Second.
Motion, Ricker, second, Bowles, to close the public hearing. Calling the question, please vote. Public hearing is now closed, thank you, everyone. Council will now consider action on ordinance number four zero seven eight realigning council wards as required by Nebraska State Statute three two dash five three three, section two. I can certainly have Mr. Kibbin reread the ordinance if any of you'd like to hear it again. Does not appear that's the case, okay.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number forty seventy-eight regarding ward boundary changes pursuant to Nebraska State Statute number thirty-two dash five three three on first reading.
Motion, Ricker, second, Carmen. Any discussion on item number eleven? Seeing none, calling the, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Carmen, go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, perhaps I missed something last week, but is there a, a, a rendering of what that's gonna look like in terms of a change of those lines?
Yes, there is, yes, there is.
Is it in here?
Yep, it is.
Okay.
Just to characterize the changes, they're pretty minor, but, you know, please review the map, and, and we didn't move you out of your district, so you, you're okay.
Still vote for myself?
You can still vote for yourself. Okay. Any other discussion on item number eleven? Hearing none, or seeing none, calling the question on item number eleven, please. Item number eleven passes. Item number twelve is an informational item regarding a proposal to begin fundraising to renovate tennis courts in Cody Park. And what the council has in front of you is a potential first draft of a possibility. Just so everyone's clear, none of this is written in stone, it's just one possible proposal. And Barb is gonna give us a few words on this here in just a second, but we wanted, we appreciate the pickleball association's willingness to come and talk to the council, because they plan to begin fundraising in the near future, and they wanted us to be aware of what was going on before they begin their fundraising efforts. So with that, Barb, you're on.
Barb Baldridge, President, North Platte Pickleball. And I am here on behalf of North Platte Pickleball with some of our board members, and our vice president, Kevin Wood, who we will have speak to tournaments, et cetera. But first of all, we're here to share our gratitude and update you on the success of Memorial Park for tennis courts, and assure you that your investment to us and with us for the community is paying in volumes. One downfall is that we really don't have enough courts. We are filling the courts on a daily basis. So with your patience, I have a few things that I would like to share with you. In, in front of you, you do have a potential design of what it could look like at Cody Park Tennis Courts. I also, we have put together an informational brochure that we are using to share with local businesses, local hospitals. And so with that, I did play pickleball, and with the Mayor's Cup and the eight celebrity teams that we had, it was a beautiful turnout. And I, I shared with you that my aha moment for me was whenever I went to Rioso to my first sanctioned tournament in New Mexico, and when they had the grand open ribbon cutting with the mayor, and the national anthem, that I knew right then and there, we needed this for North Platte. And I can tell you with how much fun that you made it, the former mayor, and council members playing, you completely surpassed my expectations, and, and I can't thank you all for the participation and, and making it a great day for North Platte. So, so thank you for that. I can't say that we had-
Let the record show that the pickleball skill of the city council and the mayor were not particularly good that day. There were some great pickleball players there, however.
I do have to let you know that I'm putting together professional video that will be shown at our national retreat in Phoenix, Arizona, February fifteenth, sixteenth, and seventeenth. They have asked us to present our story of North Platte Pickleball on a national level, and we have forty-seven hundred ambassadors, so I will have to have Pete and Mr. Garrick and the mayor sign waivers of release, because I, I have a four-minute video of that day. And it was a tremendous day for North Platte, so thank you for your participation. And his skills aren't too bad either, so. With that, we had sixty-six teams in, in the tournament in three days, and for not having a hotel room to be found within a hundred miles for less than a hundred and fifty dollars because of the concerts, we were blessed with that. And I'll have Kevin speak to what our plans are for next year, coming up. So we have grown exponentially, we have summer leagues, we now have junior and multi-generational events. The Cornhusker Games provide multi-generational events, and what that is, is a grandparent can play with a grandson. And this is a total family sport, it's the fastest-growing sport in America. And North Platte is on the cutting edge. They are looking to us to see how we do it in our community. And with that, we are putting together the professional video, the professional how-to video. I am a USA Pickleball Ambassador for the Great Plains region, and, and what that means is I am on a Facebook page just for those ambassadors, on a daily basis, I am in touch with twelve hundred and fifty people, answering questions, how do you do it in your community, what would you do here? And I found with, I'm able to answer so many of these questions that we are networking, but it's disjointed. It needs to be brought together, and I've been asked to be able to come and provide that. So it, it really does, being a USA Pickleball Ambassador brings so much to our community. You have to be on Places to Play, and What Places to Play is a free app that anyone traveling across the nation can put in North Platte, Nebraska. In a matter of seconds, they can find me, find our pickleball peeps where to play. We have had people from Bend, Oregon that have come through, and on their way to St. Louis, stayed a couple of days, played with us. When they came back, they made sure to stop, and they said that of everyone that they stopped and played, every, you know, couple times a day, that North Platte, Nebraska are the nicest people ever. So with that, we feel like we are the welcome mat for our community, and very proud of our, our pickleball group. Sorry, little dry mouth there. We have, we have had people that contact me to, to see where they want to spend their two-week vacation. They called up and wanted to know what we had for pickleball facilities. I shared with them where we play, when we play, and they were choosing between here or Scotts Bluff. They chose to come here. And, and so with that, Patty and Larry Walker have become our extended families, and they will be returning, they stayed for two weeks, and played every day that they could. So with that, our membership has grown from twelve people. A year and a half ago, we now have one hundred and twenty members, growing strong. We, we cost share and profit share all of our tournament proceeds with Sunrise Rotary. They come and work for us, and in turn, we share the proceeds with them. turn, we share the proceeds with them. Winter play, we just recently did Secure the Salvation Army. Who knew? The Salvation Army is old Roosevelt School, and they have a gym, and they hadn't had a custodian in six months, and I went to them, and they're charging us $10 a day to play there, when we play, two nights a week, and unfortunately, they hadn't had a custodian for six months, so called out the troops, and with 15 to 18 mobs, an hour and a half later, we were ready to set up our pickleball nets. And with that, we exchange cleaning services with them. We go in on Mondays and Thursdays and clean up after the kiddos, and that's the kind of pickleball community that we have to make that happen. We are now being offered multiple times at the North Platte Rec Center, Wednesday morning, Wednesday night, Thursday afternoon, Friday morning. We're having on Wednesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays, an average of 24 to 30 people. We only have four courts. We're waiting, and Bob Barr and Travis have come to me and said, okay, so if, you know, if we have pickleball in the next place, how would you like it set up? So with that, we are waiting on our winter play at the DNN Event Center because they are so busy since the pandemic and the growth of all the youth sports that we're put on hold, and we don't have that venue until in December or after the first of the year. So we are blessed to have indoor courts, to be able to keep our pickleball community growing. Recently, we have been presenting to local hospitals, giving clinics that have gone to Holdridge, have gone to McCook, and presented at their hospital a wellness program. If you'll see the brochure that we have, it's all things pickleball, what we have created over the last year, our intentions, what we want to do, all things pickleball. And on the inside is our health and wellness, that pickleball is much more than a sport. It's all the physical, health, mental, and economic benefits of pickleball are here. And I would like to draw your attention to the fellow on the inside is Ernie Medina, Jr. He is our pickleball evangelist. He is a physician. He's got so many letters behind his name. I had to look up what, you know, what all he does provide, but he is our USA Pickleball Ambassador, Board at Large for Health and Wellness, and he was turned on to pickleball three years ago by a 79-year-old mother. She is now, she is still a practicing physician at 83, and she turned her son on to pickleball, and now all four of his siblings are all USA Pickleball ambassadors, and his mother has been working out and just trained and just was on the medal stand for her first national pickleball tournament. And so we feel that pickleball is much more than a sport, and with all of that, we are going and presenting to local hospitals, and we also are providing through Jeff Smeltzer and the college, we will be putting on pickleball courses and hope to be able to reach out to McCook and their other campuses as well. So we'll be offering that come the first of the year. And as I go, as a USA Pickleball Ambassador, all my work is volunteer. When I put on clinics, went to Holdridge, had 26 people. They were supposed to have 12. Showed up, they had 26 people. And then I went to McCook, and we had 33. And with that, I charged $10 a head, and then I, in turn, am able to donate that back to our club for balls and little things like crazy little videos that we're going to be presenting. So with that, I recently took a trip to the West Coast and stopped along the way and met fellow ambassadors, stopped at Laramie, Wyoming, and then I met up with an ambassador in Rupert, Idaho. They have 5,500 people, excuse me, 7,700 people. They have 70 members playing pickleball, had a couple of courts in a church, and they went and spoke with their city council, and they built a nine-court design. And so if you'll look at the design that we have, this is what a nine-court design would look like. You have a stack of four courts on one side, four courts on another, and you have a beautiful show court in the middle. So with that design and the city administrator, their town is so small that the park collector and the fire chief and the public parks guy are all the same person that shared all this information with me on how they put this together. So with that, all of the benefits of pickleball is the biggest draw for 55-plus living facilities. And pickleball is now so popular that Arizona has gotten on board, they're losing their pickleball players in the summer because it's too hot, so now they're working on indoor pickleball to keep their peeps at home, and now they have the first indoor huge retreat built. With that, Ernie Medina, his go-to saying is, if we could put all the benefits of pickleball in a pill, it would be one of the top prescribed drugs in the world. Well, not only is it wonderful for health benefits, but also for economic impact for our community. So with that, I'll turn it over to Kevin to speak about tournaments and our future plans, but we want to continue to be your welcome mat. And I think the Community Build Playground has raised the bar for community service for North Platte, and we want to assure you that we want to continue to work for you and with you, and it must be an honor to serve on the city council at this point with the development that is happening in our community. And just excited with developments today with the $600,000 grant that was given to the DNN Event Center for the expansion, and I know I have looked at plans, and I can tell you that the plans for the development for sports in our area with the Rec Center when it does come to fruition, we hope, and also with the expansion at the DNN Event Center, they've all assured me that pickleball is right up there in their plans. So thank you for giving us a start. I say we are not North Platte Pickleball Club. We're not an organization. We are truly a pickleball community, and we have grown to 120 family members, and it's more than a game. So thank you for this opportunity. We appreciate you.
My name is Kevin Wood. I live at 2620 West C Street. I'm a high school wrestling coach here in town. A few years ago, we had the opportunity to wrestle in the state duel tournament, and we were fortunate enough to win a duel that was really important to us. It came down to the last match where we had a kid, and they didn't. And so my kid got to walk out and take a forfeit, and we won, and we won some other matches ahead of that. It was a big deal. We were really happy. And the kid says, I didn't do anything. I just walked out there. Yeah, but you were here, and we needed you, and nobody else was here. You did it. And I want to thank the mayor, the city attorney, city administrator, and council members for the job that you do. There might be other people that could do your job, but they're not here. You're the ones that are doing it, and thank you very much for the job that you do. And to the mayor, a good leader and a good boss is a real asset to any organization, and I think you're doing a great job, and I appreciate the work that you're doing. You talked about your ability to play pickleball, and I want to tell you that there's still an open invitation for all of you to play pickleball. I think it's a lot of fun. I play it whenever I can, but I certainly don't play pickleball because I'm good. I play pickleball because it's a lot of fun, and I want other people to experience that. And I want a lot of kids in our school to wrestle because it's a lot of fun. I enjoy it. I'd like them to learn more about it. I'd like them to learn more about math. I'd like them to learn more about their faith, the things that I'm interested in. I want to share with you, and I want to share pickleball with our community. I've played in a lot of tournaments across the state. I've played in Omaha. I've played in Lincoln. I've played in Grand Island. I've played in Carney. I've played in North Platte, and my favorite place to play is North Platte, and there's people that have told me their favorite place to play is in North Platte, and we'd like to have more competitions here. It's just so dang much fun. We make a little money on the side. I think the city businesses, I think the city businesses make a little bit of money on the side, but mostly, it's just so much fun. We had a great Nebraska Land Days tournament. We had a great tournament prior to that out at the DNN Center, well-attended, I think well-run. People really enjoyed it. We want to have another tournament at Nebraska Land Days. This year, we want to include both a men's tournament of differing age divisions and differing ability divisions. Some people do want to play recreational. Some people do want to play competitive, and we want to attract and serve the needs of both those groups. We want to have a women's division. We want to have a mixed division. My partner just spoke to you. She's a lot of fun. I think we both play because it's so much fun. We want to have multi-generational, and we want to have a kids' division. We recently had a multi-generational and a kids-only tournament at Memorial Park. It was great fun. I had the opportunity to play with a kid from St. Patrick's, super neat kid, Sutton Tickle, and I'd have played 100 times more because when I asked him if he'd play with me, and he says, you mean, you mean, you and me partners? You and me? To have an interaction with that, like that with a student, that's worth a lot to me. Sutton's a great kid. We had a great tournament. It's a lot of fun. I encourage you to let pickleball grow in any way that you can. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Anyone else have anything they'd like to talk about regarding pickleball? Going once, going twice?
Can I just, one last thing? It is so much fun, and I know you're saying, you know this, it's so much fun just to say pickleball. Saying it's fun.
Moving on to item number 13. Review on the revised City of North Platte Employee Handbook. Now, council, we had a clerical error. You all have a copy of this near you, these pages right here. The copy that you received in your book, and unfortunately, they got posted online, page number 24, thank you, Matt, and, yeah, page number 25, did not have the correct edits visible. They were there, they were just hidden from you when it was printed. So these are the correct edits. This is how it should read, page 24 and page 25, and the items that are struck out on these pages would be struck out in the book, in the final version. So we will not discuss and/or debate or vote on this until sometime in December, likely the second meeting, so that you all have time to absorb everything in the manual and also to receive comment from anyone who might choose to comment about it. Just so we're clear, anything throughout the book that is struck out, that is the old stuff. The stuff that is not struck out is the new stuff. Okay? So if anyone has any questions, they're welcome to reach out to me or Matt, or we'll take a couple right now. Looks like Mr. Recker has a question.
Well, yes, on page 52, number three, I think this is probably maybe ordered incorrectly. I'll read it. An employee shall not accept as may be otherwise provided by law, solicit or accept any gift or other item of monetary value of up to $20. So can I accept the gift of $50?
Well, you're not an employee. So what you do is in your own conscience, but are you asking if an employee could accept something that exceeds $20? Is that really your question?
Well, I guess my question is, as I read this, we're saying that they can't receive anything of value up to $20. But is it okay to receive something of value greater than $20? And that's not spelled out, so I think it says up to $20.
Page 52 of them.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the intent is that it's $20 or less.
Terry, do you have an interpretation?
I think it's fine the way it is, but to clarify, as to Ed's point, we could amend to say not in excess of, if that would make it clear.
That would probably clarify it a little bit.
Okay.
And that remains consistent with the IRS's definition of de minimis, what's that word? Non-de minimis? There we go, that we were looking for, looking at earlier.
And I, Mayor, if I may, for members of council, the purpose of the agenda item is essentially to provide you and the public the proposed modifications. As you go through this, it's a lot of information to consume, so feel free to email with questions or call with questions, but there is, like I said, it's a pretty healthy revision. The handbook's last revision was in 1996. Obviously, employment practices have changed significantly since that period of time, and so this revision is a first stab of bringing it up to date, and then we anticipate that it would become a living, breathing document going forward rather than sitting on the shelf for 20-plus years.
I just have one question. It refers to the Human Resources Office. Is that an office that we will have or do have or?
The position is budgeted. We will likely refill that position at some point in the future here.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, moving on to item number 14. Approved claims.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the claims.
I see that.
Motion reaker, second try on. Any discussion on the claims? Seeing none, calling the question on the claims. Mr. Carmen, would you press your button again, please? Hey, Jim, would you press your button? Thank you, okay. Claims are paid. Public agenda request. We respect our city employees and request that any complaints or criticisms of employees not be aired in a public meeting. Concerns about employees should be brought to the attention of the city administrator or the mayor. Individuals in violation will be declared out of order. This is the section of the agenda where anyone that might have an agenda request item can approach and request that we put the item on a future agenda. Anyone have anything to request? Does not appear so. Mr. Recker?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adjourn.
Second. Motion reaker, second Volz to adjourn, calling the question on adjournment. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a nice evening.
Thank you.